Good evening. Welcome to this forum for the Wall Lake School Board election. Tonight is October 17th, 2018. This forum features persons who have filed for the Wall Lake Consolidated School Board election. Voters will be asked to select no more than two of the three candidates, and each successful candidate will complete a six-year term. The candidates tonight are Peggy Casagrande, Greg Paddock, and Mark Seigler. I'm Charlie Carpenter, member of the League of Women Voters. That's right, Ellen. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, national, nonpartisan political organization. Our members take on the hands-on work of safeguarding democracy. We are directly involved in shaping important issues that keep our community strong. As a member of the League of Women Voters, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this one that impacts local, state, and even national issues. The League is funded by contributions by concerned businesses and individuals. A membership in the League is open to men and women ages 16 and above. If you're interested in learning more about the League of Women Voters, I would encourage you to visit our website, which is L W B O A, or Oakland area, dot org. L W B O A dot org. The League of Women Voters does not endorse any candidate or political party. The views you'll hear tonight are solely those of the candidates. We'll begin with the one-minute opening statement. Ms. Casagrande.
Thank you. I'm Peggy Casagrande. I am currently on the Wall Lake School Board. I am the vice president. I've been on the school board for 10 years, just finishing my second term. I've lived in Wall Lake District for about 20 years. My husband and I have four boys. Two have graduated from the district and two are still in the district. I really hope to get back on board to continue my advocating on behalf of students and on behalf of our staff. I have experience locally and at the state level and in Washington DC advocating on behalf of funding for our staff and for our district. I know that our job is extremely important, especially since we have many candidates who are turning over in the state legislature this year. So I would ask that you vote for experience so that we can continue to educate our community on what's going on with public education. Thank you.
And Mr. Paddock, would you offer your opening statement?
So my name is Greg Paddock. I am not currently on the board. I am a challenger. I have a bachelor's degree of engineering from GMI. It's no longer called GMI. I've got a master's from Oakland University, project management professional. A lot of my experience has not been education-related. It's been in the engineering field and the business-related. I have been with a company called Meritor for 24 years, longtime engineer. About seven years ago, I started changing that role to be more of a commercial role. I'm currently what they call product line manager for specialty products. So I'm responsible for what it is that we're going to sell, I'm responsible for costs, and I'm responsible for setting the long-term strategy. Married for 14 years, I have twin girls that are in fifth grade at Keith Elementary. One of my daughters has received some special education. So since she's been in first grade, I've been very involved in advocating for my own kids and advocating for other kids. I've testified at the State Board of Education. I hope that you'll agree.
Thank you. And Mr. Seigler.
Good evening. My name is Mark Seigler. I have been a member of the Wall Lake School Board for 24 years. I have been a resident of Farmington Hills, which is the one-square-mile of Wall Lake that is part of the Wall Lake School District for 30 years. Both of my children have graduated from Wall Lake schools in our living, successful, thriving careers. I am a very strong advocate for education. I am also president of the Oakland County School Board of Directors. So it gives me the ability to look at things, not only for what is best for Wall Lake, but what is best for Oakland County, and in some other ways, what is best for the state. I am on conversations on a regular basis with Lansing, and I believe that we still have a lot of work to do to get proper funding for what we need in the schools.
Okay, now we'll begin the question segment of the forum. Mr. Paddock, we'll start with the first question. What do you see as the key role of a school board member?
Key role of a school board member should be to help set the strategy for the district. Cabinet should implement that. Obviously, there's an oversight that's seen at that level for changes, whether it's large investments, whether it's buses, whether it's buildings, whether it's changes in the classes themselves. But I think that times have changed a little bit. There's been so many cuts to the staff of the district that Terry Less does a great job balancing the books, but I think the change that I would like to see for the boards is take a little bit more forward, active role, getting involved with the finances of the district, finding opportunities to reduce costs. We still have declining enrollment. We still have shrinking budgets. There is a movement to try and increase the state's commitment to public education with funding, but until that comes, I think that as a board member, we're going to be a lot more actively involved in the day-to-day.
Thank you. Mr. Seigler.
In actuality, the key role of a school board member, school board trustee, is to hire the superintendent. That is our key function as we look. After that, it is to monitor. It is to watch our funding, watch how we're spending, not to get involved in the day-to-day activities of the buildings, because that is the job of the central administration. Our function also is to be in the community, to be in the buildings, to be at activities, whether it's a school function or even a senior function representing the district and letting the community know what we stand for, what our district is about, how we are helping our students, how we're providing for their enrichment, and protecting them the best we can.
Thank you. And Ms. Casagrande.
I agree with Mr. Seigler. Being on the board, our number-one job is to hire the superintendent, and I was part of the team that brought Mr. Paddock into this district through a pretty rigorous process. And also to govern and make sure that we are looking at the budget at a high level, asking those questions, looking things outside of the box, and asking not only if we have a student achievement number at a certain level, what about the students who are not achieving? Asking those tough questions, and also advocating on behalf of our students, our district, and trying to get people to understand why it is so important to back public education. Thank you.
Our next question is about funding, and we'll start with Mr. Seigler. If funding were increased for Wall Lake schools, what would be your first funding priority?
If funding was increased, that would be a dream come true. I would look to develop reading programs. I would also look at programs that we could possibly implement for preschool programs in this district. The adequacy study shows that we are being underfunded, and we will continue to be underfunded until Lansing takes a different standard on public education. So I really feel that reading is key, and pre-K is what we have to look at, because we have to give the children the tools to gain knowledge through school, through experience, and if they don't have reading as a basic, we haven't succeeded at all.
Thank you. Ms. Casagrande.
Thank you. Our first priority would be to support our staff and not have to have them come every year to have concessions. We have had concessionary agreements and concessions in our contracts for the 10 years that I've been on the board. So we would not have to go that route, which would be very nice. I agree with Mr. Seigler that there are many programs and interventions that we no longer have in our district that I would like to bring back. In addition to reading recovery and reading options, there are also special education needs that we do not get full funding from the federal government. And also mental health services. We only get very few funds from the federal government in that area. And I want to earmark those for certain things. I would like to make sure that we have additional funding for some of those services that people think are extras when they're really needed. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Paddock.
I agree with Mrs. Casagrande. I think that if there's additional funds, the first thing that should happen is stopping up the concessions that happen year over year. You know, I heard the term not long ago where somebody said that teaching has become a downwardly mobile profession, and that makes me really uncomfortable, because my kids are in the schools. I want to thank the teachers. It's the best and brightest who are going after those jobs. In addition to that, programs for gifted are accelerated. You know, I did say earlier, my daughter received special education. I know firsthand, we're in a pretty good place, and I know there's been some improvements over the last couple of years in the district. So if there's opportunity for improvement with additional funding there, but what I don't see is some of the gifted accelerated programs. I drive by the, I think it's the Abbott School that has the STEAM program that they advertise. I've known parents who've come to me and said, "We're in Wall Lake, but we really wanted this type of education," so they pulled their kids out and took them to that, and I'd like to be able to compete against that.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Ms. Casagrande. What would you do to make sure you are out and about in the district representing all the interests and stakeholders in our students' education?
I actually am out and about in our district with all our stakeholders. One of the things that I do regularly is I work with our PTSA council legislative rep. And sometimes we have a new person who comes in. We have a new one came in this year. And I work to make sure the information that I have on public education and funding and issues are brought down to that student body. I'm also out at our many events, whether it's arts, whether it's sports, and understanding what's going on in our schools, and volunteering and attending events, and really just making sure that I have a pulse on the community. I think if you're going to serve in this district, you need to understand that. My roots were being the reflections chair. Here at this school, I was a PTSA president for three years. I think you need to understand the schools at all levels in order to be effective. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Paddock.
So my style may be a little different. I'm generally the person who likes to walk around quietly and observe and see what could be done for improvements. As part of the board, I know that's not really the goal, so going to different school events, definitely being there for graduations, but also just walking the halls of the schools. I'd like to think that within my first year, I'd be able to spend a day in each of the schools, just seeing how is everything functioning, even little things like the hand dryers in bathrooms, are they effective or are they not, because it slows down the kids and it becomes a distraction. At the grand level, promote the fact that we are a good school district, market to those parents who are sort of on the fence. Do we move into the Wall Lake school district? Do we move into a competing district? I want to show that we have the best programs available. Other than that, I'm not really a front-of-the- crowd, showy person. I know I'm here doing it, but as you can all tell, I'm kind of uncomfortable doing this.
And Mr. Seigler.
Again, after 24 years, you know the buildings, you know the people. You have to stay out there and be in the community, and it goes beyond schools. It goes to the senior facilities. It goes to other community activities that are there. If people don't know who you are in the district or what the district stands for, you haven't really achieved your goal. So my feeling is, I've been a booster president. I've been chair of different committees. I worked out the bottom villages in the 80s when we just had failing events. 1984 was unfortunate to have success, but that took getting the community into the buildings. So the key thing is to be out there and be involved.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Mr. Paddock. What will you do to increase student proficiency, particularly in reading and mathematics?
That is a good question. I think that there is a lot of data available through student testing at different levels. The basic reading is happening in early elementary levels. I'd like to think that we could mine some of that data to look for, I want to say difference in not so much individual teacher effectiveness, but in groups or tracks, to look for best practices and then spread those amongst the rest of the teaching staff. I think it's a tough nut to crack. I've kind of said before, I'm not an education expert, which makes it strange that I'm running for a school board. I'm a businessperson, but I want to create the right opportunities for both of them.
Thank you. Mr. Seigler.
You have to have the right tools. You have to have the right interventions. You have to realize that we have over 80 English-to-learn language programs within our district. So you have to have children that are able to learn and able to start with the basics. We have been fortunate. We have the tools. We have the interventions. We try to work with not only the children, but with the communities and with the parents. Years ago at Maple Elementary, we had a very large Chaldean population. We had many families that did not speak English. We actually started programs at the school at night to bring the families into the school so that all members of the family could learn, to understand, and excel.
Thank you. Ms. Casagrande.
Thank you. So to improve proficiency in reading and math, I think it starts early. So we have an I-ready program within the district. As a board member, what I would do is continue to make sure we use interventions like that and that we understand at early level where our students are. But I would also advocate at the state level to make sure that we keep changing our targets. We need to show a year of growth, for example, and when the state tests change or when the targets change. It's very difficult to show that and to show that improvement. I also believe that we need to keep asking questions as a board member. Is this working? If not, what else can we do? And we need to make sure that we don't keep doing what isn't working. And I think that our board does that very effectively, because we ask those questions and we don't just keep doing the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Mr. Seigler. Mr. Seigler, you touched on this in your last question, but from the audience, our community has a multicultural population. What do you think would be a good way to increase cultural competence in our academic community?
It starts with getting the families into the school. It starts with getting the families involved in the school. And again, I'll go back to Maple. We actually had a beach party in the middle of winter where they took the gymnasium in the hallway and filled it with scent, and everybody thought this was the craziest thing we could do, but we had, the school was full of parents learning about cultures. It was made into a potluck, and everybody enjoyed it. It just developed from there. And also, we have a multicultural diversity council within the district. I've been active on that for many years, that again, it gets the message to the parents, to the community, its parents, non-parents, administrators, staff.
Thank you. And Ms. Casagrande.
In our district, often times, there's no one culture or one type of student or background. I always say that my children receive more than one education. I've been taking film of my children, and there was so much difference. They understand when they get out there in the world that it doesn't matter how someone speaks or it doesn't matter what they look like. That is the normal for them. So we do things in Wall Lake, like our Martin Luther King Jr. event in every January, and that is one of the things that my family goes to every year. It is amazing to see what kids are doing out there, and diversity is also understanding the difference between the people who have and the people who don't. We had a young gentleman who came and told us about how he's getting backpacks and student supplies for kids in Detroit and helping the homeless. And diversity is encompassing a lot of things. So it's just continuing to stress why that's important, and that's what the world's going to be like when we get out there.
Thank you. Mr. Paddock.
So Wall Lake is very diverse. I grew up in a small town in eastern North Carolina where there was really dominantly two, yeah, there was one culture, but there was two racial groups that dominated. Now to come up here and all the differences between Chaldeans, we don't have Chaldeans in North Carolina, or it's not a predominant group, and there's so many other nationalities that have moved into this area. I think that's mainly driven by the job market. And you're right, we have this big diversity of kids, but they're all Wall Lake kids, and it's nice to see how they gel and how they learn from each other. Institutionalizing that, obviously with Martin Luther King Day, not just so much for African-American history, but all cultural history amongst all the students here. I'd like to open that up a little bit more. It's interesting, too, we get days off. It's not for Christmas, but we get days off for that, and then a lot of the other days correspond with, let's say, Jewish holidays. But I think there's other holidays that are maybe a little bit more underrepresented that maybe we could distribute a little bit more, at least make everybody more aware. Yep. Sorry.
Thank you. And then for our next question, we'll start with Ms. Casagrande. What are two things that the state and our district more in particular can do to improve teacher preparedness?
Well, in Wall Lake, I'm pretty proud of the fact that we are a leader in professional development, and what we can do to improve is to allow our teachers to have additional time and in different avenues to be able to share with one another. So we have a program, it used to be called the Teacher-to-Teacher Program. We may call it something different now, but giving our teachers the opportunity to sit in another classroom and then to debrief afterwards. If you think about it in the business world, we do that a lot. We feed off of each other, and we have peer reviews. So I think we need to continue that practice, and I think we also need to hopefully find some ways. I know teachers have a lot that they have to do to keep their certifications up, and we have to make sure that they have time to do that and that they have opportunities to do that in whatever way works for them, whether that is classroom instruction, whether that is, again, maybe a peer mentoring relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paddock.
So I agree on the mentoring. As people are going through their career arc and through the learning phases, having the more experienced teachers, those who are high performers, being able to mentor those who are new is very important. Preparing the teachers can be more than just the teacher itself, though. Having paras available for when classroom sizes get very large, and it's more difficult for a teacher to focus on a group of 30 kids, where years ago it might have been 24 or 25, providing the substitutes for the professional development. I mentioned student test data before. Having a really good feedback means for every teacher to say, "Look, if this is what you're doing this year, it's working better than what you've done the last couple of years, and we're seeing it in the numbers." Other than that, maybe classroom supplies. Every year when we buy the list of stuff, I always ask the question, "Why am I buying a 24-pack of pencils for this retail cost when the district could have bought crates of pencils for pennies on the dollar?" And overall for the community, it would have been more constructive.
Thank you. Mr. Seigler.
Professional development, teacher prep, that's critical, as Mrs. Casagrande said, teacher-to-teacher mentoring, aligning our programs, aligning how our teachers are communicating with each other. The teachers lounge, when the teachers are sitting in there, really, what works best for you? How are you communicating with the students? How are you achieving these goals? We can utilize the tools that we are using right now, and we can always improve on those. But the big thing for the teachers is having the time to create good plans, communicating with other teachers, and going by best practices. We have that within the buildings, and we have that in some situations by grade level, and that's the key.
Thank you. And for our next question, we'll start with Mr. Paddock. Kids who receive a high-quality preschool are more likely to graduate from high school and earn higher income. What new role should the district play in broadening access to preschool?
Access to preschool? That's a good question. I've really focused on schools more as a K-12. When we did preschools in the area, we transitioned up from Berkeley to West Bloomfield here, and we went a little bit different route for the preschools. There are more academic-type preschools if the district can create those. If they don't exist today, which I would say maybe they already do, and I just haven't been focused on it. But yeah, you can focus at the early ages, 2, 3, 4, preparing them for kindergarten, definitely with reading, the very beginnings of math. If there was funds and there were people and resources available and space to do that, it's definitely something I would like to see.
Any suggestions?
Well, currently, we are looking at preschool programs and enlarging the preschool programs that we have in the district. And we have our kindergarten academies. We have our summer programs for our students to help them be prepared for school. We have different avenues that we are using in some of our buildings for preschool programs, and some of them are being paid for, subsidized. They're there, the parents have to pay for them to get involved or whatever. But I think the biggest thing right now is you have to have the space, and you have to have the proper buildings, and then you have to fill those buildings with a possible preschool program.
Thank you. Ms. Casagrande.
So I think, I hear, Mr. Seigler, we need to look at our current programs and see what we're doing, look at what's happening around us, and also come back to our parents and our community and find out, is this something that you would like? And we're actually currently following a recent facility study. We are going to go out. It's one of the questions we're going to be asking, is what do you think about our preschool programs? Do you like the different ends of the district? Would you like to see a preschool center? If so, how would we go about funding something like that if that's what our community would like? We've also talked a lot on the board about what it means to get a student into the district early so that we can get them to understand the way Wall Lake wants to educate students and then hopefully keep them with our district going forward. And I was fortunate enough to be part of the board rapport liaison with the Head Start program with Joan Sayer. I think we need to continue to collaborate with her. She is an expert in our area and in our district, and make sure that she helps us to figure out what are those next steps in preschool.
Thank you. And for our next question, we'll start with Mr. Seigler. How can you, as a board member, promote positive relationships among teachers and the administration?
Our staff is a very caring and giving staff. Our staff has given concessions for more years than I even want to count in this district and work with us to be able to operate the district on a yearly basis. We have the relationship. We have the relationship from the buildings to central administration to the board. So it's not that the relationship is the term, but our people are concessionary. We don't have the ability to offer them more money right now. When we do negotiations every year and we are waiting for the contract, we cringe because we don't know what our staff is going to have to give, or what they're going to have to give up, or how they're going to trade off on the insurance. I think the biggest thing we have to do right now is figure out how to stop taking away and getting room for it.
Thank you. Ms. Casagrande.
So primarily, we need to listen. We need to listen to both sides. Our avenue, meeting teachers and... Our avenue between teachers and the administration is our superintendent. So, listening to what our superintendent is telling us, asking questions when items are brought to us regarding those relationships. And I think it's important to be out there with the teachers as well. Our family was actually invited to come when the teachers were bowling as an event, and we went bowling. And you get a different feel for the teachers when you do that, and it's nice that we have that. We also were asked to come in and to speak with the union just if they had some questions and some concerns about some things going on. So, we need to come and listen again. And again, take that all through the superintendent because that's how that relationship is cultivated. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Pabick.
It's important to have a sense of mission, and that mission being at least the same, top, bottom, within the entire district, whether it's board, whether it's the cabinet, whether it's Mr. Gopman, down to teachers, down to parents, down to all the support staff. And definitely within that equality. So, these teachers who are giving the concessions every year, and they are, you know, in manufacturing terms, more what I'm used to, is, you know, this is your labor force. This is the stuff that does value-add, which is, you know, the education of our kids. When we ask a teacher to take a round number, let's say 3% pay concession, then I would hope that the administration who maybe makes 50% more than they do will take a larger than 3% all the way up to the superintendent who makes significantly more than the teachers. So, should he be giving back his 3%? Should it be more than 3%? I think top, bottom, everybody needs to be committed, and, you know, the board is unpaid, so...
Thank you. All right. Our next question will start with Ms. Casagrande. Not all students have the same goals or abilities, and not all students are able to attend university for a variety of reasons. What are your ideas for making vocational education more important in our schools?
So, interestingly enough, that is something I've actually been talking about on the campaign trail here this season, how important vocational tech is. I was recently in Washington, D.C. with the board and sat in a session that talked about taking data and showing how important it is to get kids a real world experience. My senior right now wants to go to a university where he will receive internship and co-op experience so that he comes out with experience. I think our kids are understanding that. And we know that not all of our kids are going to go to college. We also have them to be career-ready. We need those jobs that are electricians. We need those jobs that do not take a college degree. So, interestingly enough, we received additional funding for her student when we had children in vocational classes this year. So, keep emphasizing those and keep emphasizing our tech centers where we do send people from the high school.
Thank you. Mr. Pabick.
I agree. Not everybody's going to be on a college/university track. You know, I'd say those that don't could probably fall into two categories, right? As the most extreme, there will be kids, and this is why the push in special education, making sure that we can get maximum education out of these kids that struggle, whether it's a learning disability down to those who are cognitively impaired. Are we preparing them to be contributing citizens once they're out of the school district? Maybe they are in through the transitions program until they're 24 or 25. You know, want to make sure that they are, they're contributing. In the middle, I would say, is the vocational track. And, you know, Mike Rowe, if everybody remembers the show Dirty Jobs, Mike Rowe is pushing this on a national level. And we need the electricians. We need people to work our factories. I'll give you an example that's happening right now. One of my suppliers just can't get anybody to work in their factory, and so they are shutting it down and we're having to resource things overseas as a result.
Thank you. And Mr. Seeger.
Career tech, tech ed, voc ed, whatever level you want to put on it. We unfortunately had to close down due to budgetary issues and space issues most of our tech ed programs. We're fortunate that we have Ole Con technical Center. We have one campus here within our district that has been here four years, and there's three others, that we can help students locally and from other areas learn whatever their career choice is or whatever they would like to do. People normally take advantage of that outside of Walt Lake, Pontiac, and some of the other areas in Oakville County. The services are there, and it's much cheaper than going to some of these tech ed programs where you're paying for a certificate and not have the experience. So, I think utilizing what we have in-house and then try to get some classes back if possible into the schools.
Thank you. Now, this will be our last question, and then we'll move on to the closing statements. We'll start with Mr. Pabick. What do you feel needs to improve the most with Walt Lake Consolidated Schools?
Well, the drum that I've been beating since I decided to run has been budget. You know, we know that there's so many programs that have been cut down. We've seen student test results, you know, declining. Say it's either correlation or it's causality. I'll just derail my train of thought. Can you repeat the question real quick?
What is the one thing that you feel needs to improve the most with Walt Lake Consolidated Schools?
I think we need to look at the spending. I think we're still going to be tasked with how do we do more with less? I think we've got to be a little bit more critical about is absolutely every dollar and every penny being paid or being used in a way that is value-added, which is ending in the education of our kids and preparing them for whatever they need. You know, if that's the standard, I think that everything that we do could be put against that. You know, we could even debate about, you know, whether we should turn off the sign and save the electricity at certain hours of the day. I know it's a silly idea, but, you know, if you don't look at things to that level of detail, then it's hard to find...
Thank you. Mr. Seeger.
I think first and foremost, one of the biggest things we've been offering our community is a pre-case center or pre-case centers. We are fortunate that we offer the same educational programs in all of our buildings. But we also now need to look at some of our older buildings and the need to go to the community and ask for either refinancing of the bottom villages that we have now or some way to go out and take down some of our older buildings that are no longer cost-efficient and build some new buildings within the district will also enhance the ability to bring in more students. Also, because we are schools of choice within our district and we don't have the space to bring in a lot of children in the elementary levels, we need to look at, again, the facilities, enlarging some of the facilities, and offering students the opportunity to come into the district at a young age.
Thank you. And Ms. Casagrande.
I think for Walt Lake to continue to be seen as a district that is leading the way, we need to look at funding for our schools, and we also need to look at keeping our staff and our students safe. So, one of the things that, you know, we are looking at doing is expanding our training. There's some training that you'll hear about called Alice Training that is teaching our staff how to be proactive if there is a situation where a stranger or an active shooter is trying to get into the building, for example. How do we keep our kids safe? And then funding, we need to make sure everybody knows that the K-12 Education Fund, where our dollars go when they come from our pockets to the state of Michigan, is being robbed by the state legislature to balance the budget. $4.5 billion has been taken away from our students, and we need to educate people so that we can put that money back in Walt Lake and bring back some of those programs we've been talking about that unfortunately we don't have anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm asking each of candidates to offer a summary, a closing statement of one minute, and we'll go in reverse alphabetical order, so we'll start with Mr. Seeger.
I'm asking for your support to help continue what I started years ago, to work out in this district. That is to make us one of the best districts in the United States. We have the ability. We have a lot of the tools, and we continually are improving and trying to upgrade what we do. We have to work on funding, as Mrs. Casagrande said, the state's school adequacy fund report came out. That's just a small template. When you find out that we're getting $8,500 per pupil, and the minimal on the adequacy studies is we should be getting at least $9,500 per pupil as well in this funding for special ed or transportation and other things, that makes a big difference. So, we need to fight financing. We need to communicate with our newly-elected officials when they are put in office, and we have to continue to push for public education so that we can achieve everything for our children and our community.
Thank you. And Mr. Pabick.
This is like the fourth forum, I think, that we've all done together. You know, the first one, I remember somebody saying, you know, when you think about running for political office, public job, you know, everybody sort of hits this, you know, enough is enough or what is enough a moment. I remember spring of last year being at the board meeting where they talked about the closure of the community head center. Scribbling away and, okay, well, it's going to be so much to invest in other facilities. It's going to be so much to tear down the building. We're going to sell it. And it was like a five-year payback, which just isn't done in business circles. And that was the long game. The short game of that was we were going to spend $900,000 to take down a building, and I don't know if you received quotes, but the goal was to receive $700,000 for that land. There's a $200,000 gap, and I'm not saying this is the only thing, but to me, it was a symptom that sort of jumped out and I said, you know, I know I'm going to run against people who are much more experienced than I am, but I think I'd take the shot.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the PTSA Council for all your work today in bringing everybody out here and revitalizing this so people can see it when they could not attend. I think this election is an opportunity to spotlight the importance of funding public education, and it's also an opportunity to look at all the great things that we've done in Walt Lake. We have a higher than 90th percentile graduation rate. We're getting students ready for their careers or for their next, you know, college education. I would ask that you keep me in because I have the experience. Please reelect me November 6th, and I would continue to advocate on behalf of our students and our staff and help people understand why it's important to keep investing in our children and in public education for careers for all of us in the state of Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the screen board portion of our forum tonight. The League of Women Voters and the Walt Lake PTSA would like to thank you, the audience, and candidates, as well as WAL TV for their participation tonight.